Glad you're making your presentation, anyway. Okay. Future board meeting dates, November 7th through 15th, then February 1st.
I won't be here for the November meeting.
You have PTO report. And we're going to do a student council report, so you can.
You can come up to the front.
Hello, I'm Holly Singer. I am our school board rep for our student council here at Amherst. We had a very successful homecoming week in September. We had around 225 students attend our dance. We raised $664 for our Portage County Humane Society during homecoming week. The executive board was able to deliver the check and take a great tour of the facility. There were so many cute cats and dogs there, oh my goodness. We donated five and a half boxes of food to the American Food Pantry at the Peace Church, and we are currently getting ready to do a toy drive for Toys for Tots with the whole school, and we're working with the Angel Tree to get things ready for what they need for the holidays. We have our Christmas pep assembly coming up where we get to play games, and that will be in December. And that is all I have for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we'll go on to administrators.
I'm saving my big report for the annual meeting, so. Football playoffs are here. We finished off the regular season being one, which was good enough to get in the number two seed in the playoffs. We won our level. Won our level one game at home against Lancaster, 42-14. We host Brilliant this Friday at 7:00 PM. Our cheer season still continues to practice and prepare for our football team to keep winning. Their halftime performances this year were fantastic. Volleyball, our volleyball team ended their regular season 18-11 and 6-1 in the conference. Back-to-back conference champions. We are good enough to get a number three seed in the playoffs. We beat Wittenberg Bernamun at home in an exciting five sets. We played St. Mary's Central this past Saturday for the regional championship and lost in three sets. I'm very proud of the season they had. We finished with a 19-12 record. Soccer, our soccer team ended their regular season 14-2 and 3, good enough to get a number two seed in the playoffs. We received Dubai for the first game and then played Tri-County at home and won 8-0. Then we played at home versus Richland Center for the regional championship and won 8-0. We play Arcadia and Arcadia on Thursday in the sectional semifinal. If we win, we play on Saturday in Arcadia versus Amory or Three Lakes to go to state. Cross-country, both boys and girls teams traveled this past Friday to Alpaca for the sectional meet. All of our runners did fantastic with many PRs. Unfortunately, we did not have anyone qualify for state this year. Congratulations on our all-conference award winners. Elliott Adejwa?
Adezwa.
Okay. My Polish is kicking in here. First-team all-conference, sixth place. Morgan Brown, Jr., first-team all-conference, seventh place. Solomon Towne, sophomore, second-team all-conference, 13th place. Owen Wiseman, or the Wiseman, sophomore, honorable mention, 19th place. And Eric Gunther, sophomore, honorable mention, 21st place. Middle school boys' basketball has started and has their first game tomorrow at Ben Franklin. Mercy City girls' basketball starts November 10. Mercy City boys' basketball and wrestling both start November 17. Thank you, Adam, for that report. Al, would you like to do a charter school report?
It's green, that means I'm on, right? Okay, we got a guest now, the second one. A great start of the year so far at the Charter School. Enrollment remains strong, and our school is really running really smoothly. Want to give a big shout-out to our teachers and our staff at our school. We've had a lot of really large events, one called the Festival of Courage. We put on a play with the entire school, so starting in first grade all the way through eighth grade, all the kids are involved in the play. And we co-mix the virtual school in there as well, so there's like, you know, 220 kids putting on a presentation. And we actually do a song where both of the schools are singing together, and it's a pretty impressive feat for our teachers to kind of pull off, because the virtual kids just come for that morning, and we later in the day have a presentation. So it's a pretty neat experience. We have some more kind of big events coming up in November. On the 16th, we have our Holiday Fair out at SWEZ, so if you are interested in holiday trinkets or goodies or artisan crafts, it's a really great time to come out and visit the school on the 16th. It is a Packer Sunday, and we have arranged for a TV near a fire to enjoy the Packer game if that is something that you are interested in. We will have that available on the 16th. Also, on the 25th, something that would be more open to the public that maybe hasn't been in the past is our Lantern Walk, and it's a really, it's kind of like the pumpkin walk they had out here last weekend where they have the pumpkins light the path. We have like hundreds and hundreds of candles, the little battery-powered candles lining the paths at SWEZ at night, and there's some storytelling in a fire pit around a store. It's really a really neat event that I recommend you guys check out. And again, that's on the 25th. Parent-teacher conferences for us are this week, so we'll be meeting with families. Our school has switched to semesters, so we're on a similar calendar to here, so we'd be getting ready usually for our report cards, but we adjusted that, so our report cards will be coming out at the semester. In the past, we'd been on trimesters, and it was just difficult, because we would want days off of school when they had school in town, and then it made it tricky for busing and some things like that. So that is something new this year for the Charter School. One last thing, we are going to be looking at our budget when we finalize it here tonight. The open-enrolled students had a really large increase for support from the state or the money that comes from each district. And we've looked at different things. One of the things we added this year was our educational support teacher. That's like the Leah Maves for the folks out at our school. And we're also looking at possibly our budget when we receive it to make sure if we have some ability to support our enrollment through hiring, so looking at things like it's an executive director-type position called a development and outreach coordinator, a person who would support recruitment to our school. So that's something that could be coming as well in the future. So, yeah, that's it for me.
Thanks, Al. Appreciate it.
Nick, did you look like you were ready to go up?
I was ready.
Nick doesn't turn down the microphone.
I rarely turn down the microphone, that's true.
Depends on my mood, I suppose. All right. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to be here with you tonight. Like Al said, we've had a strong beginning to the school year. The end of the first quarter is looming, which is kind of amazing. It really is incredible how fast this school year is flying by. We are currently in the process of planning our first reward trips of our school year. Our middle school students earn these reward trips through good behavior and making good choices. For this quarter, our fifth and sixth graders head off to Whitetail Lanes for a half-day of bowling fun, and the seventh and eighth graders make the slightly longer trip to Five Star Lanes to do some bowling, some games, and some sand volleyball. These trips are great fun for all students involved, and are a wonderful way for us to show our students that consistently positive choices result in positive consequences. I love that we're able to offer these for our students. As a middle school staff, we are conducting a book study this year centering around this book, The Successful Middle School, which is published by the Association for Middle Level Education. Last staff meeting, we discussed some of the things that we're doing really well as a middle school and some of our areas for growth as we identify those things. This coming month, we're going to be digging into culture and community, looking at ways in which we can support students through meeting students where they are, being welcoming and inclusive, advocating for student success, providing a safe space to learn, and engaging with families in the community in positive and proactive ways, just to name a few of the things we'll be looking at. I'm excited by the prospects for growth in our school as a result of the study, our study of the book. It's a great chance for us to also recognize and realize the many ways that we are already meeting the benchmarks for success as presented in the book, as the association looks at what a successful middle school looks like. I think in many ways, we are meeting many of those benchmarks, which is awesome. If anybody's interested in a copy to review or to take a look at, I'm perfectly happy to provide that for you. Just let me know. We are taking delivery of our fundraiser items and prizes on Tuesday and having students take those items home to deliver. I mentioned last week that we had a very successful fundraiser in the middle school this year. Notably, we exceeded national averages for percentage of student engagement, which is a great tribute to our families and our students in the school. We have earmarked some of the monies raised to support our reward trips, like I mentioned, and to purchase some safety equipment for classrooms. The student council coordinators and I are also discussing other ways that we can use those funds to increase school spirit and engagement throughout the year. Thank you to all of our middle school families and extended families for their support as we wrap up fundraiser season. And that, friends, is the news from the middle school. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Thanks for warming up.
Yes.
Maybe. Fantastic first quarter in the elementary school. We have our assembly on Wednesday morning, and then we spend some time with Tom Pease in the afternoon, which is a great way to kind of finish up the quarter. Behavior is down and engagement is up, which is exactly what we're hoping for. I did, in the last three weeks, I've done three different tours with families who are looking to potentially come here next year to our school already, which would be open enrolled in. It's just so fun to walk these families around the school, and they compare to schools that they've either been in throughout their lives or current schools that they're at, and it's just, it's such a proud moment, like seeing our kids and how they're behaving and how they interact with new families when they come into our school, and how clean our school is, and just the engagement that they have and how happy they are. So it's early to start giving those tours, but it's really telling of the amazing school we have. Our staff is making the most out of the little bit of amount of professional development time we do have, and unfortunately, with all of the letters training, they haven't had a lot of opportunities to really dig into areas that they're excited about. So this year, we're utilizing our two interns that you had approved in many more ways than what we thought we were going to be able to, because of our student achievement has grown, and so we don't need them with a lot of diagnostic testing that we need to do. So we're instead going to be utilizing our staff strengths, where we'll be able to use our interns to teach a class, and then I have, we have two classroom teachers who will be able to go out and free up other classroom teachers to observe their colleagues in areas that they are hoping to learn more about. So we're excited to start some of that work in November and December. Just learning from our own strengths already is a great way to do it. One last thing, the PTO fundraiser, they're looking to be doing here shortly, and they have some great ideas for incentives for students and families to raise money, and one of them may or may not include me sleeping on the roof sometime soon. So we'll see how much we raise if that happens.
Okay, well, good luck.
In the middle of winter?
Under.
What? Yeah.
Anybody else?
I will not do a lot. I will just.
So a couple of weeks ago, I shared a document with the school board regarding our ACT. I've updated that document to show kind of four years of scores throughout our conference and then maybe 10 area schools that are not in our conference, so I think there's 29 total schools. This year, out of the 19 public schools, we had the second highest ATC score, 20.4. If you look at our four-year rolling average of ACTs among all 29 schools, we're the only school that averages over 20 in those four years, so that's pretty, that's pretty telling what our kids have been doing testing-wise, so hopefully we can keep that going. Obviously, certain years might have different groups of kids, but so far, in over a four-year period, they've been doing pretty good. So we are sharing that data in the community spirit this next month when the new edition comes out. I was talking to Ryan. We don't like comparing ourselves to other schools, you know, where you put that, but I think especially moving forward, we're going to need support from our community again coming up, just showing them that the investment that they have put into our school and our students, both financially and through other donations, is paying off for them, so hopefully they can see that investment that they're putting back into our school is a good investment, and they'll continue to keep investing in us.
Thanks, Mike.
Anybody else?
Good evening. So just update in the pupil services world, as far as Act 20 update goes, so we know that the elementary teachers K through 3 have really been focusing, well, even fourth grade too this year, and fifth grade have been doing the letters training and really focusing on that science of reading training. So this year, we have all of the classroom aides involved in a science of reading training targeted for them as well. So it kind of started where, I mean, special education, we, you know, wanted that, but we also invited the regular ed aides in too. So Donika Goodwin and Maggie Trenda from CISA 5 are the reading specialists that are doing these trainings during in-service days. And so they focused on reviewing what science of reading was, and then the last two in-services focused on oral language strategies they could do with students and word recognition strategies. The next training will be on January 16th for all the classroom aides, so that's kind of a cool thing. And then the other thing is that all of our 4K through eighth-grade special ed teachers have received the Wilson Reading System introductory training, which meets the Act 20 requirements. At this time in our district, we have five of the Wilson Reading System kits in our district and one at the Charter School, so we have six of them total. My next step or focus for next school year is really building that science of reading knowledge and intervention skills at that high school level with high school special ed staff. As far as special educator indicator number 14, so this is like post outcome survey that the state has schools do. So Doug Spadoni is usually the one that volunteers every year in August and September to do these surveys with students, special education students who have graduated from the district, just to see how they're doing and if, how well we've prepared them for life after high school. He was able, there were 13 of them in the cohort that he needed to try to survey, he was able to reach 12 of the 13. And the common theme he said to me that students reported to him was, "We didn't realize how difficult the real world is," and thought high school was hard at the time. So that was something that they realized, you know, after they graduated from high school, but were really appreciative of, you know, all the support that they received from staff throughout the years. And because of this, the survey that Doug did, our total transition grant amount that we were awarded by the state was $10,495.62. So because of those surveys and collecting this data for the state, we were able to get money from the state transition grant for that, so that was pretty cool. Ready Bodies Learning Minds update, so this school year, we have a designated motor lab in the elementary area in our occupational therapy classroom. So there are 12 stations that Leah Maves had set up at the very beginning of the school year, and it's available for special ed students to use, regular ed students to use. She's using that space when she does the Ready Bodies Learning Minds stations with students. So we have special ed students using it, and Leah, when she does her interventions with students, first and second grade, she is using these motor labs three times per week, and third grade, she's doing it two times a week. There are no tier two or three students identified right now in kindergarten, so that's why. And she is working with the 4K classroom teachers to see if, you know, they could kind of work together to have the 4K students use those motor labs possibly during PE, their designated PE times. District mental wellness team, so right now, we are working on building supplies in the Falcon Closet for students. We've had quite a few school staff make donations of school materials or gently-used clothes or brand-new clothes items that we could put in there. Next, we're going to send it out to community members, sign up Genius to continue building the supplies for students in need. The team is also working on creating our goals for the '25-'26 school year, so really looking at areas we want to target as a team. We're also working as a team on reviewing and adding some details to a district recovery plan, so what happens post-crisis situation, what are the things that we're going to do, what are the strategies and support strategies for students and staff after an emergency or crisis situation? So we're kind of working on that. And the school counselors are also looking at reviewing academic and career planning goals, curriculum for the whole district, including at that elementary level, so they're working with CISA 5 staff too on that. So those are just some of the things we're working on this year.
Do you want to do the social media?
I usually have it in there. They give it to us every couple of months and just as a highlight, just as more of a reminder to all of our staff, just to keep engaging and to keep sending their photos and opportunities in. So we definitely saw an uptick at the start of the year, which is expected, because we, usually in the summer months, we feel a little bit of a dive in terms of our engagement, so things are back up again. We've had a couple really popular posts lately, one being Doug Spadoni made a really nice video for the new crisis hotline, and that was a great way to highlight that work that those students did for suicide awareness.
Okay. So you can save the rest of your report.
Correct.
Move on to the remaining items and information we had about eight minutes before we need to go to the annual meeting. State Education Convention, January 21st through 23rd. You have until October 31st to let Marilyn know so she can read your notes. Unofficial enrollment report for September 2nd. Total enrollment is 1,233 district-wide, including the Travis School and the Blue Forests. 12:40 last round, so where the items numbers fluctuate. Either way, we're still hanging in there. Thank you, note in your packet from the Karski family, and so we have the school board election notice, and current candidates coming up, so make sure that you can. I'll be here to continue to. I must move on to consent agenda. We have several items in there. Anything you want to pull out separately and discuss, just let me know, which number it is. Otherwise, we're looking for a motion to approve it as the second.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any carries? We'll move on to discussion action items, and I'm going to put this on pause at 7:30 to go into the annual meeting, and we'll continue wherever we left off after that. This is the time of the year that we select a board member via delegate, and we also select an alternate for the state convention, the ASB Assembly, January 21st at 1:30 PM. Make a motion to. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They know I love that.
Do you have to appoint a?
We have to do a.
An alternate?
Yeah.
I don't plan on going, so someone else have to take over?
Can you do it?
Okay, I'll make a.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's taken care of. Review and possibly approve overnight extended student trip for the Charter School, sixth grade, for stargazing and constellation research, January 28th through 30th. We've got information in our packet. It's no cost to the district. Anything?
Every year, yep, it's right at Anderson Lodge on the West End. I'll make a motion to approve the TRCCS sixth-grade trip to SWEZ for stargazing.
A second.
Motion second. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Also, from the Charter School, the eighth-grade trip to Southern Illinois and Missouri for outdoor education, history, learning experience, eighth, third through eighths.
That's similar to the last trip. It's a typical eighth-grade trip. Yeah, there are always some other areas, but the same museum was so rated out by the last year's eighth grade. It's had some, and there has been possible. This is the same one they went to Arkansas last year? Yeah, Arkansas. Well, that one was down ninth grade. It's the eighth-grade trip they go and they fundraised for this trip.
And I'm assuming it went really well with the, you used something like that, right?
Yep.
That all worked out?
Yeah, and it follows all of the rules about separate rooms for kids and adults, and make their own room.
Excellent. Any other motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the trip to Southern Illinois and Missouri.
Second. Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Review and possibly approve batting cage installation and naming.
Yeah, yep. Sort of kind of, we wanted to make sure that we did it formally, because I think it first came in March, and we had a couple of different conversations that we loved the idea, but we needed some more information, and there's been some changes to it, so we wanted to make sure that we brought it back and did it formally, and also then voted on the naming rights as well as part of that. I know that was. They did drop off a check today, so he dropped off a check with $30,000 for us today.
I think forty?
Thirty.
Thirty, thirty. Okay, I have a second for that?
A second.
And the naming rights from the Daryl Strasinski Memorial Patty. Okay, so we have a motion second for the batting cage and naming rights. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll go on to Justice Center Rethal Agreement. Similar to last year, did it go up? Did it go up last year?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
If it did go up, I added to TRCCS, or TRCCS, TRCCS, event that are historically every year to make it super easy. One being the eighth-grade fundraiser. I was a parent at the Charter School for a year, and I need any money they earn, they should be, and I want them to help me out, so that's my contribution to the whole district.
And it makes sense, they're part of our district, that they should be part of the agreement as well, and so this is the second year in a row we've done an agreement like this, and we were happy to do it this way. It's worked out well for us last year, it just was a lot easier, and just, it just really solidified our partnership, so, yeah.
It makes it very.
Yeah, yep.
And if I could just again share an email that all teachers can get, you know, we can come into Harvey and have a community group, or we for the trigonometry class, either like we really have to.
Okay, any other motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve, Justice Center Rethal Agreement.
A second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have time to get the next one in?
Is it a?
Let's take some discussion.
Does he have as a, oh, he does have as a possible action item.
Why don't I put it on pause?
Yeah.
Then we'll come back to item 8.6.
Yeah, Dale's at a WASDA event, so he's not able to make it today, so he's at WASDA today and tomorrow. So he wanted to get all this information to you to see what's out there and what our potential options are, so we definitely, we can go back and have some further discussion, or if you want to get some additional information and not have an action tonight, we can do that as well, so.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Okay, we wish to suspend the regular meeting.
A second.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, then I'm going to call the annual district meeting to order at 7:30 PM. I'm going to, for those who pledge allegiance, we've all done that, but I had. I'm going to, for those who pledge allegiance, we've all done that, but if I had new people in the audience, I would do so. You're supposed to open it for the...
Yeah. Unless it was the wind, I don't know. It could have been the wind just pushing a few people.
Go in it?
It's not locked.
It is not unlocked. It is locked.
I think that was it. Locked.
It is locked.
I think it...
It probably just locked, yeah. 7:30, so yeah, it's probably set to lock.
Thank you, perfect.
Sounds good. Well then, the first item on is Superintendent Ruggles' message to the district about championships and the district...
Do you technically have to do the roll call and verification of a quorum?
Well, we have a quorum, I verified it.
Okay, okay, all right.
Full slate, so.
Okay, all right.
Excellent. I don't think we have to do a roll call. It gets in the...
All right, well, thank you. So every year as part of our annual meeting, we ask our staff about some achievements and all the amazing things that's happening. And this year, there's 19 pages of highlights from athletics, from co-curriculars, from music and the arts in our classrooms. There really are some incredible achievements throughout the year that we're incredibly proud of and I could sit and read this word for word, but I just wanted to highlight for everybody at home watching as well. This is also linked into our board packet. We're super proud of everybody, but we also want to talk at a higher level as well. We think it's really important, anytime we're going to talk about money and talk about our budget and our needs, we start with our vision, our goals, and some of the celebrations that we have throughout the year. And so I'm going to start with our mission and vision and some of those goals. We'll get into some of those celebrations kind of as part of, as we're talking through our strategic plan, and that will lead us into our budget and financial piece. And I'll turn it over to Becky once we get there. I think it's important that we always keep this mission and vision in mind. Now, we did talk in beginning of the year about revisiting that vision, make it a little more succinct, make sure that it is something that is, something that, you know, when we talk about, that is something that we would know, that we memorize, be able to say off the top of our head. We did some updates to this, I think, three years ago, when I started that summer. It was some good collaborative conversations, but as we talked with staff, where they said, you know, we updated our strategic goals, we updated, created a portrait of a learner. Let's go back to this, make sure that this speaks to exactly what we want to have happen here in Tomorrow River Schools and also possibly simplify it. You know, we did such a great job with that portrait of a learner and just doing, and making some statements that were very succinct, that spoke to us from a K-12 standpoint. And we're going to be looking to do this work a little bit later in the year in that same way. So as we move into our strategic plan, I always talk about our pillars and for whatever it's worth. So we have five main pillars as part of our strategic plan. And the first is to have a high-quality staff. And just with that, so in terms of the staffing that we have, we have six administrators here, one superintendent, five administrators, 107 certified staff members here in Tomorrow River, and 66 support staff members. So we definitely are a growing staff over the years. And with that, we want to make sure that we have incredibly strong staff and they are supported. We support them in their growth. This summer, our admin team met and we talked about some of our goals that we wanted to have throughout the year. And we set goals or actually action steps under each of these pillars. And for our high-quality staff, one of the first things we talked about, and this kind of came from some negotiations last year, but also some ongoing conversations that we've been having with staff members throughout the year, is we want to look at our compensation plan. Right now, in order to get to the top of our pay scale, you have to have two master's degrees. It's a little antiquated and I believe it was, that model was made here in 1988. Is that the right number? So that's what we've been using since 1988. Things have changed a bit. Now, while we want our staff to be highly educated and we value the staff that goes out and get additional education and as a master's degree, we also want to look at alternative pathways for that. So we have a group that's looking at that right now. Sherry is helping lead that process with some staff members. So they're looking at some ways that they can move up the pay scale that's sustainable, is going to promote growth, professional growth, and that there's good staff buy-in for that process as well. Couple other action steps we made this year. We brought on some interns to support RTI and reading plans. So far this year, we have two interns this fall and they're doing excellent work. They freed up some of our classroom teachers to do some pretty amazing work around interventions. They freed up our classroom teachers to work on our reading plans. And they're also going to free up some teachers to get in and do some classroom visits for each other to encourage, again, some professional growth in that way. So it's really been a great plan. We're looking at some interns again for next semester. And, you know, kind of a byproduct of that as well is those interns are loving it here and it's just a way for them to spread the word of what a great place this is. It builds on our potential subpool and it gives us potential candidates for open positions down the way. So it's really been a great thing for us here and super excited to keep moving forward with that. We also made our action step to recruit and retain some more substitute teachers. We continue to try to do that and get the word out wherever we can. We have some of our admin team, led by Al, was at UW Stevens Point recently, trying to recruit some more, so we will continue with those efforts. And last, under our action steps, we're trying to give opportunities for all of our staff to grow in their leadership. And Nick and Sherry are doing some really good work with some book studies with a group of teachers and wherever we can, we're trying to grow our leaders. I've always been proud, anytime I can grow a leader that, a teacher that becomes a assistant principal or a principal, or they go out and do leadership in other ways, you know, that's something I think is really important for us, that we want to grow our teachers from within. Under the teaching and learning pillar, our goal is that Tomorrow River will provide rigorous, challenging, and innovative strategies and best practices across the K-12 curriculum, thereby enabling students to achieve their highest level. So last year, our efforts were definitely focused around the new reading law, Act 20. And that was elementary did a lot of their training around Act 20. Middle school did some work around standards-based grading this last year, so some really good work there. And high school was working on some student engagement topics. And we saw some growth at all the levels and really good buy-in for all of our staff. What we've tried to really push with our certified staff is that concept of continuous improvement. We have some amazing staff here, we really do. But our goal all along has been, how do you get a little bit better each day? And how do we improve a little bit each day for our kids? So we know we're not perfect, we know we're doing some really good work here, so what can we do to improve? And our staff is really bought into that philosophy and they've been absolutely incredible in all of our action steps last year and also going into this year. So some of our big action steps this year, I know you've heard about it at this table, will potentially be seen a bill for this come this summer, or spring in the summer. So we have, our math teachers are doing a math review and they're currently piloting some new resources. And that has been quite the process here. It's going really well, Sherry and Nick. And also Mike are doing some amazing work, just pushing on their staff. Just making sure, doing pilot work is never easy. It's hard whenever you're just given something new and then, a couple of months later, you're given another new resource and then you have to compare and see what works best. So they've been doing a great job working with their teachers through that process and we're, we'll be excited at the end of the year to hopefully be in a position to adopt a new K-12 resource there for math. Another action step, our special education team is working on some literacy support at the high school and also for their educational assistance. And we continue in our second year working towards our public displays of learning and just really utilizing that our portrait of a learner, making sure that that is part of our grammar, that is part of our conversations at every level K-12. What I love about our profile of learner, it gives us common language across K-12. And as you can see, throughout the building, there is examples of it all over. And I love that, that it's come into life. And the kids are talking about it and the teachers are talking about it. Again, it's given us that common language, that common goal of what do we want to see in all of our students, and it's been a super positive thing for us here in Tomorrow River. Our third pillar is future readiness. And that's Tomorrow River School District will work with community partners to ensure that students have a fully developed plan for post-high school success, whether that be pursuing a college degree or preparing for other career work opportunities. Mike and the high school team shared quite a bit of information there on the ACP process and all of the different ways that our high school students have to really develop their future-ready skills. And they're doing some amazing work there. I know some folks, I think in this room, were part of the reality shop this last year, sort of really cool opportunity that's part of ACP process. And we're always trying to engage our students in these conversations of what does future-ready mean for them. Because the skills are changing, the job sets are changing constantly, and we just need to make sure kids are ready for whatever's thrown at them. Here's some more examples of success, number of students that are part of the youth apprenticeship program, you know. And our action steps are to, for our middle school and our high school to really align those ACP processes, just to make sure that we're, it's really a continuation of, from middle school into high school, of the ACP process. We did some work this summer to develop an AI belief statement around artificial intelligence. It was important to us that we address it head-on. So last year, we started some conversations with students and with teachers. We did some PD with our teachers, but we also said, we need to make sure that we not only have a policy around AI, but we have a philosophy around AI, because it's not perfect, it's not going anywhere, it's here to stay. So how are we going to embrace the good and also teach our students and teach our community about maybe some of the dangers and some of the not-so-great things about AI as well? So we developed a belief statement and a continuum of use for our secondary students. So 612, we have three levels of AI use and that, we rolled that out to start the year. We'll continue to hone that and work on that, especially as new AI technology comes out. It's something that's going to be here for good, so it's, so we're, again, we're embracing it, but we're also trying to teach appropriate use as well. So that's a very important piece of that. Talked a little bit earlier about some of that zone technology in curriculum. We started that in the middle school this year, we're hoping to roll that up eventually up into the high school as well. That is an area where we're hearing from employers that it's an area of need. It's definitely a growing area. So our fourth pillar, social-emotional support of community. So the Tomorrow River School District will ensure that young people have the support and resources to attain a positive mental health mindset as well as character assets, which will maximize their social-emotional potential. Up here, we have a couple of different examples from all of our levels of some of our SCL programs that are happening. Again, we try to make sure that our levels are really working well, so it's a continuum, and also that our SCL support team is working hand-in-hand with our classroom teachers on this as well, knowing what they need and supporting them, but also make sure that it's not just completely pull-out, that we're having these conversations within the classrooms as well. Our last pillar is relationship to community and their stakeholders. And as part of that, I'm just going to go right to the action steps here. We developed quite a few action steps here. The first was our partnership with Stellar Virtual. We had a meeting with them this last week. We are still on our, the right trajectory to get everything set for open enrollment come the winter. So the Wisconsin Online Learning Academy, which will be chartered by Tomorrow River School District, will be set to start for the 2026, 2027 school year. So we're excited to do that. We've had some conversations about how to really put our touch in Wisconsin Online Learn Academy. We've had some conversations on how we could connect our K-8 and expand our K-8 current Tomorrow River virtual charter as well. So lots of possibilities there. And I want to highlight, especially for folks at home, one of the reasons we're doing this is to create a new revenue stream for our school district. In these budget times, you can either cut your budget, or you can increase fees, or you can seek out some new revenue streams. And that's what we're doing here, we're seeking a new revenue stream. We know that virtual learning is growing. There's virtual programs all throughout the United States and they continue to grow. There's a couple of big players in Wisconsin right now, and we said, we do things pretty well. We think we can do that really well as well, so let's get into that market and see if maybe we can do it better. We're also getting ready to launch our next fundraising program, the RE Ready to Fly. We talked a little bit about that this last year, and we're going to have four different baskets within that fundraising program. And then we also want to make sure that we continue to talk about it throughout the year and starting tonight, that in the fall of 2026, we're going to have to seek renewal of our operational referendum. So our current operational referendum, we're in our second year, next year will be in the third and final year. So next fall, we will seek the renewal, then for whatever it might be, three, four years or, we've got plenty of time to decide that. But we just want to continue to preview that and let all the folks and the community that that's out there and that we are looking at fall of 2026 for that. And part of that, we also partnered with Nexus for our updated facility study. So Nexus will start that in November. And, you know, that facility study is not to scare anybody in terms of we're looking for a capital referendum or anything like that. It's, okay, now that we've finished our last referendum with the steam addition, let's look at what our needs are, let's build a five and 10-year building plan to make sure that it's sustainable and that we can budget accordingly throughout the years and just really see what those needs are. So Nexus is going to partner with us and do that, and our staff and community will see some messages from us started in November in regards to that. All right. So now I'm going to talk just a little bit about budget before I turn it over for the levy talk. But I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about our K-12 state funding overall and just what our budget reality is before we start this conversation here. For those viewing at home, there's a couple of different documents that are in the board packet. One is from the WASBA organization and one is from DPI, both that are on the current two-year by-end budget. And I think both documents do a really good job of highlighting that two-year budget, which is pretty complicated, and also lays out in a little more plain terms what that budget looks like. But I definitely wanted to highlight a few things, and that first being from the state level, there's no general aid increase this year for the state. And there's been lots of talk within, in the news, and I've seen things online about that 325. Several years ago, Governor Evers used a line item veto to say that, to put in into that current budget, that every year, they would add $325 per student for the revenue. The, this last budget said, okay, you can levy that locally, but you're not getting that money from the state. So I want to be very clear with everybody that might be watching, and I know I shared this out with the staff as well. So we are not getting $325 from the state per kid. We've been given the opportunity to levy that locally for each kid. So that is something I think is important that we know and realize. Also from the state lens, 71% of school districts in the state are receiving less state aid this year than they had last year. We are part of that 71% here. In Tomorrow River, we're about 440,000 less from the state for this year as we're building this current year's budget. we're building this, this current year's budget. As we look at the state level, our student enrollment is down at the state level, and the charter school enrollment for the state is, is up by about, I believe it's 4%. So we, we continue to see more students go to charter schools within the entire state, but we have kind of an aging population, and overall, many of the districts in Wisconsin now are, are declining enrollment. What does that mean for us? So we are a slowly declining in-district enrollment district, but because of our, our numbers for open enrollment, our actual overall enrollment is up. So we're up about 20, 20-ish students this year. But, but also what that means is because our, our in-student population is, is declining, and, and our, we've, as we've seen in, in this area as well, our property valuation has gone up, that hurt, that really hurts us for our revenue, revenue limit, because based on a very complicated revenue sheet formula that is given to us from the state, it makes it look like we are a much wealthier district than what we are. And I, I wish I could describe that better. And then if I could show, show a, a very complicated form here, and, and just how many lines and, and pieces that it has, but, but those are the two pieces that, that kind of come back to, to hurt us unfortunately. You know, we, we've talked about this before, I, you've, you've seen that, that one graph before. In 2024, there was a record number of referendums in the state of Wisconsin. Now, it went down a bit in 2025, but they were still high, and in, as we go into 2026, we're, we're also seeing that trend continue. So the referendums remain high. Over 80% of districts are, have gone to referendum, and many rely upon operating referendums to, to function. This, this is a number, another data piece that, that we used from 2023, 2024. Again, from our last meeting, Mike highlighted our, our achievement levels, but I, but I thought this was really important, as, as we're, as we're setting our levy here and talking about budget. Going back just two years, we're the, we were the highest achieving district in our conference, and the lowest spending district in our, in our conference as well. We, we have been, we've done well with what we have, and we continue to do well with what we have, and we're, we're proud of that fact, and we should be proud of that fact. Another piece of that, so, so this year, that, our maximum revenue per member that, that we can have is $11,650. Last year, the state average was over $13,000. So again, we, we continue to do the best we can do, but clearly, we are, we have less to levy than the rest of the state. As we go into these next conversations, I definitely want to highlight to, to folks, especially at home, we, we had some, kind of an overall philosophy, several philosophies as we're building this budget. Number one, just to be open and transparent. With everything that we do, we want to be open and transparent. We want folks to know, we want the best schools for our community, we want the best schools for our families, and best schools for our kids. And, and we want, we want to recognize these budget impacts, so I, I definitely want folks to know, I want them to be educated on it, so they really know what's happening from, from a state level, and how that affects us here in Tomorrow River. But at that same time, I want them to know, we continue to seek solutions, we continue to seek creative problem-solving, that we, we're not going to throw our hands up and say, oh, I guess the state's giving us less money this year, so, you know, let's, let's, let's levy to the max, or whatever that conversation looks like. Like, we are going to continue to seek other revenue sources, we're going to continue to seek solutions to this issue. You know, we'll, we'll continue to talk to our state and, and, and push for, for better funding, but at that same time, we're going to work with our community to do the best we can here. With that, we'll continue to evaluate our spending for, for next year. We're, we're, we're going to dig in deep and find out where we have some efficiencies. I, I already talked about a few other alternative revenue sources that we'll be seeking for next year as well, so we'll continue, again, to be creative in that way. But, but I, you know, just, we, we don't ever want to lose our focus, and we want to be the best school district in central Wisconsin, the best district for all of our families, and we'll continue to, to operate in that manner, because we have amazing folks here who care a lot about kids, and we're going to continue to do our, our best for them, so. All right. With that, I think I'm, I'm going to leave this up here as, as we get into our, our budget conversation here. But I, I wanted to lay out our, kind of the history of the mill rate here in, in Tomorrow River Schools. And as, as you, as you look to, to the far right side, in blue, tho, those were, those top numbers were our projected pre-referendum mill rates, what we thought they were going to be when we, before we went to the operating referendum here, just, just two years ago. As you can see, last year, we actually came in under our projected, projected revenue limit, or, I'm sorry, mill rate. And, and we were pretty excited about that. Unfortunately, there is, everybody was evaluated that, that year as well. So even though we came in under, some folks maybe didn't see that, that full extent of that. So as we look in this year, 2026, our, our projected pre-referendum mill rate was 795. Now, we did some calculations, and if that 325 was funded by this 325 per pupil increase for, for all of our students, that was, that line of my veto would have been given to us from the state, our, our mill rate going into tonight's conversation would have been We, we know that wasn't given to us, that, but we, we have the ability to levy that. If we would levy, do the full levy, we'd be looking at an 813 mill rate. Now, we, we've done some creative conversations here, and I will let Becky lead those conversations about what our recommended mill rate will be. And I will take my seat for this part of the conversation.
Did you say Becky was going to go up?
No, I think just when we get in.
Just when we, we get into the, yeah, the, yeah, the recommendations.
Yeah.
All right. Next thing we have to do is, we have to read into the public notice, and Kirk's going to take care of that next.
Notice is hereby given to qualified electors of the school district of Tomorrow River at the annual meeting. Set district for the transaction of business will be held in the Tomorrow River School District Boardroom on the 27th day of October 2025 at 7:30 p.m. Notice of budget hearing. Notice hereby given to qualified electors of the school district of Tomorrow River that the budget hearing will be held in the Tomorrow River School District Boardroom on the 27th day of October 2025 at 7:20 p.m. The summary of the budget is printed below. Detailed copies are available for inspection at the district office at 357 North Main Street, Annapolis, Wisconsin.
I think that was published on, on the 1st of September.
Yes, it was dated on the 22nd day of September.
And for the community spirit, and we also published it two more times in the Stevens point juror.
Okay. The next, the next thing we have to, to take care of is selecting a meeting chairperson, since this is an annual meeting and the public can participate. Nominations will be taken from the floor or board members. The chairperson should know his qualifications for voting prior to the meeting. Orders must be at least 18 years of age, must be a resident of the district, no less than 10 days, and the chairperson also appoints a parliamentarian. So give promotions from the floor or from the board for the chairperson. Work, you do such a fine job along the U. Motion second, any other nominations? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, I'll take over as chair, I'm going to appoint Ryan Ruggles as parliamentarian if we so need. The next thing we do, the next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from last year's annual meeting. And you can see these in your packet if you click. Minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual meeting minutes from October 28th, 2025. I'll second.
Motion second, any questions or concerns? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now we'll go on with the treasurer's report from Bob Chinske, the board president.
For the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, our balance on hand was $3,448,872.42. Of that, the debt service fund is at $742,924.37. The referendum construction fund, 49, balance is $73,433.83. Capital improvement fund, 46, is at, balance on hand is $5,080.36. Athletic complex fundraiser balance on hand is $36,514.29. And the rolling steam equipment donation fund is current balance at the end of the year was $42,137.25.
I'm going to give you some, I'm going to propose the tentative budget for, for the public to vote on. And I'm going to go down to the total for the budget, and I'll give you the comparisons from here. And this, this includes general, general aid, as well as some federal aid and food service and so forth, so it's, it's going to be higher because it includes all those items. The proposed budget is for $22,829, yeah, $22,829,791. And in 2024, 25, it was 26 million? Oh, excuse me. Yeah. It was $16,745,863.21, correct? I'm talking about the grand total, it's in the trail there. Okay, that's 23, 24. 24, 25 is, is year-to-date activity. Expense total will be $26,411,625,000. Correct? All right, so the proposed budget is $22,829,791.08. Questions on that? Now we'll have the hearing on the proposed tentative budget. And this is, we're open for discussion, for information. I'm going to just talk just briefly about a few things that Ryan already touched on, some of these that, that have an impact on, on our budget for this year. One being, not only for this, this coming year, that the state's not going to fund the 325 per student, you have to ask the taxpayers for that, but also in the following year, planning a budget, it's both years. That's the first time they've, they've veered off of the norm of doing that in, I think, in decades, 18 years. Other things that are going to impact us would be, we got, we, we have to make, we have money deducted for our private schools and charter schools. We have an amount of our private school voucher aid reduction this year is $211,070. We have, so, at least more than 70% of our budget is salaries and benefits, so, you know, we have to, we have to increase pay for our employees, keep good quality staff on board. We, we're experiencing potential 11% increase in our health insurance. We have necessary upgrades, which are part of a, part of the task, part of the business of being in school, and that is keeping our curriculum up to date, you know, pilot programs that are coming, that are going to lead us to choosing a new curriculum for, for math and for sciences. All of those are going to add to our cost. So if there's no other questions, I'm going to go on and talk about the tax levy. On the screen before, we have what we, what the tax levy would have been for this year if we, yeah, if we could get back on the screen. When we went to referendum, operating expenses, we made a prediction that it would be around 813 for 2026, if we did full levy. At the time, we were assuming we were going to get funded from the state at the rate of 325 per student. That has since gone away. So the projected pre-referendum was 795 that year. The last loss of funding, we brought that up to 813. We did some, we had a very long meeting, our last board meeting, we had quite a kind of long conversation on what we can do to get that levy down. And we found some funding that was available in our Fund 39, our debt service balance, and we're able to apply some funds towards that, which brought our levy rate down to 798. And that's the recommended levy for this year. Are there questions on that? Becky, would you, did you have anything you wanted to add on the tax levy?
Okay.
All right, so.
So then that says 799, but why does the document in here say 798, not that it...
It's 798.85 something.
Technically, you should round up to 799, but...
I was just wondering why it was different.
Yeah.
Okay, then we're going with resolutions for '25, '26. We'll vote on the budget and levy in the later part of the meeting. Resolution, well, actually, resolution one is to adopt the tax levy. The historical one, the recommendation is for 799, so I'm looking for more discussion or a motion from floor to approve the levy as proposed, 799. I have a second. Motion second to approve the levy of 799. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we'll adopt that levy. The next one is a resolution to provide free textbooks to students, any motion for that?
I'll make the motion to provide free textbooks to students.
Motion second. Motion second, provide free textbooks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item is to set the salaries of school board members, currently at $200 a month. That has to come from the floor, it can't come from the... Motion second, maintain the $200 a month salary. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item is to authorize payment of actual aid or actual and necessary expenses of board members who travel in performance of their duties, at conventions, training sessions, things like, such like that. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, I have a motion to authorize payment of services for board members who travel in performance of their duties.
And we have second as well. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a motion to direct the board to contract for the use of services of transportation vehicles in accordance with statute 421. vehicles in accordance with statute number 21. And we have second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we need a motion to direct the board to provide school breakfast and lunch programs and to charge students the appropriate amounts to cover the expenses of food service. Motion second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next motion we need is to direct the board to provide for the prosecution or defense of any legal action or proceedings in which the school district is involved. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We need a motion to allow for the disposal of surplus property, authorized sale of school property excluding real estate as deemed appropriate by the board. All items to be disposed or sold should be posted within the building for district use before selling or disposing. We have a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We need authorization through a motion for the board to short-term borrow up to $900,000. This is for times when we're waiting for municipalities' monies to come in, in case we get. Are you getting that, Becky? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We need authorization to lease, for the board to lease school property, school sites, building and equipment. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We need a motion to authorize the board to acquire real estate through purchase or condemnation. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We need to discuss and set the 2026 annual meeting date. Historically, it's on the 4th Monday of October. That would be October 26th of 2026. I think they can come from there.
Yeah.
I'll motion to set the 2026 annual meeting date to October 26th, 2026.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? This is just informational, this is in the packet, which is available to the public if you want to look at these. It shows historical estimates of student enrollment from 1998 right behind to the present. And it shows personnel, number of teachers. We have definitely gone. Is there any other business, any other new business? Okay, then I'll make the motion to adjourn the regular, the regular board meeting to follow.
Any prayers? Okay, I'll motion to adjourn the annual meeting, return to a regular board meeting.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Turn to the other meeting.
Yes, we were in the last item, snowplow.
So my question is, did we actually get quotes?
That was my question.
I didn't see any quotes in there.
That was my question.
Yeah.
It says quotes, but it only shows one.
Right, what?
It says quotes, but it only shows one, so were there actually others?
That's what I was wondering, if we actually got other, I'm sorry, other snowplow quotes, because that's what his recommendation is, just to go with them, because they're local.
But he did say that there were little snowplows.
Yeah, I know, but I would like to see them.
I guess, right.
I mean, yeah. So, I want to see them.
Yeah, I don't know if he got formal quotes, I think he had conversations, and it was clear through the conversations, but.
Technically, we have to have.
Especially with another contract that we're just going to.
The plowing services.
No, no.
Plowing, plowing services.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it just rolls over every year, we don't. That's part of our due diligence, right? Yes, I do.
Sure. So we'll table that item, but we can, we should talk about plow though, because there still is, there's something to be done. But us guys can't do it all, we have other contracts, they can't, they can't get things ready and before the sun comes up. Unless we have a big snow, it's lighter snowplows, that's what we need. Separate that item.
I think you can still park enough, you gotta have to silence the doors, that's up there, so that's on our crew. Support you guys, do more snowplowing. Do you have any opinion of steel blade versus a poly blade?
No, because we are all steel.
I mean, the frame is still steel on there.
Yeah.
It'll probably be replaceable.
Yeah. They back up the installation?
Of that, it is stock parts.
I believe so, I've had, I've had, which one's stock?
Yeah, the dentokene snowplow. Much good as well. I guess that's your question. Because I know there's, one of those distributors is the guy who, you know, he sells a lot, that's what we do all the time.
That's the top one? Or, what do you mean, or?
I think that is, I don't have places on top of that.
You want to table this item too, until you find out the answer to that question? We got time, I believe. Do you want to have a crystal ball on whether or not.
Does this know where it is? Is there anybody at Truck Shop USA that knows the plow? Or they just saw, or they got it, he knows the plow.
Okay.
You know, something's wrong, but then you can follow. So it just there. You guys are going to say, hey, well, to check at the factory, or is somebody there actually, you know, say, you have a question, this is going over, yeah, they'll be there to take care of. Or the top guy, he can do it. Obviously, that's a note that Dale's opinion on it is worth conversation at these annual meetings.
Okay.
I mean, this is something, we operate fast, yeah. I mean, do we want to approve even the buy?
I think we should.
But then we can decide.
Which one? Because if you do it up to 9,500, at least you're covering both of them. Yeah, at least you're covering both of the options, and then just deciding the vendor should really.
I mean, I would say that, the last would just, it's a quality of service, it's right there.
So, we can, you know, motion to approve up to 9,500?
And I just wanted to point out with this plow, we had originally approved purchase, purchasing it through referendum monies. Which is going to decrease what we can transfer into 39, which is something we talked about at that last special board meeting. Warning you, when we don't have 50,000 to transfer into Fund 39 for that relief. It'll be more like 40,000.
So we're going to look at the building's own's budget, a little closer first before we establish the company?
I think so, I think we need to do that, we need to have a sit-down with Dale before we can make that determination.
Yeah, we're going to maintain, we're trying to, that should definitely come out of the way.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, for the steering issue.
No.
No, because I'd be wrestling with it.
Yeah.
So you authorize the, I think, repair.
So.
Where, where does it go? So we're looking for a motion to approve up to a maximum of 95 by the workplow, pending the location of the, I mean, the distribution of the plow.
So we gotta have comparable service, is the high bed, right, a little bit, and we up to the side, one of the, one of the, for it. And just to be fair, I have no benefit at all in choosing the guy. Right, just the different ones.
Somebody want to make that motion?
Sounds like these two guys did. Somehow pieced it together, yeah.
Do we have any, I mean, where we are, we should really table this? Do we have anything coming up that we need to address, that we'd have to have a call special meeting here in the next couple of weeks at all, or not?
Yeah, the next meeting is November 17th, right?
November 17th is.
Yeah, that's kind of.
You could have snowplow.
That's right.
Oof, I hope not.
Although they could, they could get by with what we have, I guess.
Yeah. We could limit through.
Yeah, we could limit through.
Yeah, I was wondering that too, like.
We got tables. We're going to table this, because that's just not clear. I mean, the way this reads, it shows the 9,500, and that's another thousand.
1,500.
And then the old stuff just got repaired, at least that part of the truck. I mean, they repaired it, if they didn't think they could still use it, somebody table this. Somebody make that.
I'll make a motion to table this in the plow. Ask for more information.
Second. Motion second to table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Items for future meeting, snowplow. It finally had one.
And we'll also be doing a presentation on school report cards, because they will be fully released by the November meeting, so the admin team and I will be doing a presentation on report cards and our goals from the report cards, so.
Motion to go to close session.
I'll make a motion to move.
No, we don't, we don't have, we don't, we don't need close session. Yep.
10:22.
So we have to adopt, we have to adopt the '25 budget.
Budget. Motion.
A second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget levy are adopted. Thank you for all the motions.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.